So, son with our passing of a board member. Father God, I pray that you would be with our people and our community, our families. This is, they endure hardship. Father God, may they experience your peace of passage, understanding. Our community do what it does best, and that is act as family in support and love and honor. I pray, Lord God, that your spirit would be upon this meeting. You would guide our conversations. Here we display the wisdom that comes from you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all forms.
Honoring Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, we're on
Thank everybody for coming.
PD has it.
Okay, alright, excellent. At this time, it is my great pleasure to announce that we have the Law Enforcement Officer of the Year award being given to Clint Kubera for demonstrating exemplary service in line of duty. And I believe the police department is going to be making this presentation.
That was chosen as Officer of the Year by all the patrol supervisors, unanimous, or you showed the gunning for the flag.
You bet. In recognition for his outstanding dedication, professionalism, and reliability. This officer has proven his dependability through his continuous actions, setting a strong example for his peers through strong works, ethics, and commitment. Thank you from the Helotis Police Department. We sure appreciate all your hard work and your efforts.
There you go, perfect. Ready, on three. One, two, three. Taking another one. One, two, three. Now a fun one.
We gonna have fun with the police.
Yes, you do. Do a fun one. Okay, on three. One, funny ears, something, no, okay. One, two, three.
Cottontons?
Something.
You gotta be smiling.
Wait for the family, there we go.
Excellent. You know you made a good decision when it's unanimous. Congratulations and thank you again for your service. And thank you for your, to your family. It's not easy having a police officer as a son, but I'm proud of our community. We have a safe community. He's made it safe. Appreciate all his work and service. Okay, at this time, we have citizens be heard. We have one speaker, nobody signed up online. Mr. David Sopansky, state your name and address for the record and share your thoughts.
Yes, my name is David Sopansky. My address is 10634 Rainbow View, Helotis, Texas, 78023. Very quickly and very efficiently, I want to do one thing. I want to commend the entire mayor's council, city council, and also, more important than anything else, the city people that work for him. They work far above and beyond doing what they need to do. And without any doubt whatsoever, as the mayor and the city council, you are doing outstanding in a lot of things that most people wouldn't even think about doing. You stand up for the rights of the city, and that I congratulate you for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, at this time, looking for a motion, a second, to approve consent agenda items number four and five as written.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda items four and five as written.
Motion by Sanders, second by Kato. All sorts of motions this week. Alright, with no discussion needed, all in favor of approving consent agenda items number four and five as written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This time, looking for a motion, a second, to discuss and take action on item number six as written concerning the interlocal agreement between the city of Helotis and the city of Gray Forest for fire prevention inspections, testing, and plan reviews.
Mr. Mayor, I move we discuss and take action on agenda item six as written.
Motion by Sanders, second by Kato. Okay, sir?
So, this seems very straightforward. My understanding, the history behind this is that the city used to provide this, this minimal support to Gray Forest in the past. It stopped for a couple of years, and I believe the mayor from Gray Forest actually asked us to come back and kind of help and support. And so, I've talked to fire and they're, they're more than happy to support. It's not a huge burden on them whatsoever, so to me, this is pretty straightforward.
No issues? No issues.
Just a question, just a little more information. The anticipated frequency of these inspections?
So, a little historic, we got Chief here, if you want to come up, you can share some thoughts, but just to touch a little bit of point on the historical basis, we had the agreement before. We had issued out, if you remember, Craig, you were on council that time, a renewal. But the then mayor of Gray Forest never signed it or even took it to council in a time of matter, and so we had no choice but to cease delivery and they, someone with dispatch at the same time, so there was really, and then some problems with some inspections that have since been corrected, and now we no longer have a legal issue to prevent us, but...
Frequency or annual inspections, unless we're called out for something specific, it's four properties.
Oh.
One time a year for each. And before, we would also inspect commercial properties, given there's only one commercial property in Gray Forest. We're not obligated to do that under this new agreement.
Okay.
So it's four, basically, bed and breakfast, short-term.
Okay.
Places.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, with no further discussion, all in favor of approving item number six as written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This time, looking for a motion, a second, to discuss and take action on item number seven as written concerning the municipal fee schedule and amendment number one. There, too. Motion by... Sanders? Okay, thank you.
I'll take the motion.
Thank you. Craig? Second by?
I'll second.
Okay, and there's really just a minor adjustment. Henry, if you want to bring some clarity to that?
Yes, sir. Mayor Council, the fee adjustment that, that we are making in this request is twofold. One is, we have a existing fee for our mobile food vendors of $300. It cannot remain at $300. It has to be no greater than the Department of State Health Services or, hopefully, DSHS. We can't go above that, so we have to bring ours down to 258 at the max. And that fee that we would be permitting fee and processing, we cannot actually charge those who are properly aligned under DSHS. Say that four times fast.
Dishes.
Dishes? Commonly referred to as dishes. We're not gonna talk about dishes and mobile food. But, but if they're aligned with dishes in the county, then we literally just do our paperwork to align them with Helotis without fee charge or anything else. But those who are not aligned, we cannot charge or permit them for more than $258. There are two new fees that we are looking to bring in, and that's the reinspection fee and the fee for amendments. Those are directly in line with, and the same wording, from the dishes website. So we're looking for your support on that.
Craig?
So, the new fees, what's driving the new fees? Not by state law, what's driving it? I know, I understand the 258, that's state law. The reinspection fee and the fees for amendments is also driven by state law, I just want to make sure.
So it is, so what happened in the, in the most recent legislation, State Bill 1008 and its sister bill on the House side, it had some very specific language that gives limitations to municipalities. The two new fees, when I went on to the dishes website, I started looking through and making sure with development services, what did we already do? Or, pardon me, what did we do? And then, what are those rates? And then, what are the rates that are posted on that website for the state? It does not, the state does not mandate that we implement these additional fees. However, the work that we have been in our doing, I think that it is proper to account for that time and effort and energy, but also with the reduced revenue potential, as far as the vendors, mobile food vendors, that are aligned under the state or the county, we will not be receiving that revenue. And if we continue to have reinspections, you will see in the Gray Forest thing that you just looked at, there's a reinspection fee associated with that. If we don't set it for this, we can't charge it. Same with the fees for amendments. Do we anticipate that there will be a lot that will fail inspections and have to be redone, those type of things? No. But if they transfer or have some other adjustments regarding their documents, then we have to do the same level of work that we did on other processes. So if the fees are authorized and allowed by the state, we're just looking to align.
So, I'm still a little bit, I, I understand what you're saying, Henry. So, the reinspection fee, was that, that is a new fee as part of our...
It is a new fee to Helotis, should you all support it.
And I just want to make sure I understand the intent and how it works. So if a food vendor truck pays the 258, they have to have an inspection, and if they fail the inspection, they've got 60 days to pass the inspection, and then we will charge them $200? Is that, is that the process?
So we can't charge, if they fail an inspection, just like if, if they failed a, just like the fire inspection, right? Or, yeah, any of the health or fire type inspections, if they fail, those currently have reinspection fees. They, what we would have done and had conversation with our legal team, you know, could we charge a different rate? We could. Could we charge an administrative fee? But we would have to identify it. And if we're gonna look to charge a fee for reinspection, just like we do other things that fail inspection, why not align with the state is, is my approach.
Okay, and can you give me an example in this process of why a vendor would want to do an amendment to, I assume, a contract with the city?
So let's say that they change vehicles, or they do some other, change their name or something like that, but it's the same owner, all that kind of stuff. I think that those types of things would fall in line with an amendment to whatever the, the current documentation is for that vendor.
For example, maybe if we, just using a business we don't have in Helotis, if we had a lot of burger and it sold, McDonald's bought it, it would still need to be re-inspected because even though it's the same facility, new ownership or whatever, or if they said, you know, instead of doing drive-through, now we're gonna do, you know, fast food carry-out and change of use or modification.
I appreciate, I, I just want to make sure I understand, and I want to understand the impact to the, to the food trucks. Since we've kind of got a growing little food truck activity in Helotis, and from what I can tell, most customers of those facilities are very pleased with them. So, I'm, I'm asking all the questions, I want to make sure we're not doing anything that would deter or hinder food trucks from participating.
So, to be clear, the, any of these fees would be, number one, for food vendors, mobile food vendors that are not aligned with DSHS or with the county. If they are aligned with them, they pay their fees, their inspections, all that through the state, we don't get to tag nothing else on. If they come to us, then we confirm they're with those two, one of those two type entities, and then we print pieces of paper and give them a sticker.
Okay.
If they are not associated, then they have to pay our fees, which equal the same as if.
That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
And the permit fee is actually a reduction, so it's actually?
It was 300.
It was 300, now we're 258.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you at second?
No other questions.
Is that, is that fee a calendar year, or is it, we pay first of September, it's good till next September? How does that fee?
Annual based on signup.
Okay. Thank you. That makes sense.
Okay. With no further discussion, all in favor of approving item number seven as written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This time will be adjourned into closed session under section 551.074, personal matters. We will not be making any decisions. We are adjourned into closed session at 7:17 PM. We shall be back to conclude our meeting.
Okay. Salina, you ready?
Yes, we're good.
Okay, the time is 8:14. We are reconfirm, uh, reconvening. At this point, looking for a motion. The second on item number nine is written.
Motion.
Um, because of how it's written, you'd have to make a motion.
No. I'm fine.
You have to make a motion and...
A motion that we, um, appoint Rick Sanders as Mayor Portland.
Okay, we have a motion by David Cato. Do we have a second?
Um, I'll make the second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, second by Buck Russell. Um, you are recusing yourself?
I am.
Okay. Uh, all in favor of motion on item number nine as made by David Cato and second by Russell, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries two, zero. Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. So that was two yes, zero no, two abstain?
Abstained.
Uh, one abstain, one recuse.
One recuse, one abstain.
Yeah, recuse.
Yes, yeah.
Recused was...
Okay. At this point, we are concluding the meeting. The meeting is adjourned at 8:15 PM.